Good evening. Thank you for joining us for this night's June 13th, 2024's 25 Fiscal Year Budget Meeting. Can you please join us in saluting the flag? Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo. Absent. And Chairman Silvestri.
Here.
May I recall, Ms. President? First department up for tonight is going to be the Human Rights Commission.
Good evening, Steve. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Just to let you know, the Human Rights Commission comprised of eight voting members and the executive director, who I am. Their goals is to do community outreach, education, and just to foster an environment of inclusivity. The budget itself is $1,000. Historically, the Human Rights Commission has received $0, so it would be appreciative on our end if you approve the budget. They take the initiatives of doing training on their own, driving to and from locations, and historically, like I said, they've received nothing, so they paid everything out of pocket.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? Just, Steve, does the money, will it go back to them directly, or does each one get a stipend, or is it for, like, supplies? What will that money be used?
So it would be for supplies, expenses, to, from, if they decide to have a little trading event or an outreach event.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great night.
Next up is Public Health Initiatives.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Buck. I'm representing the Public Health Department.
Good evening, Lauren.
Thanks. Just quickly, our mission is to promote, protect, preserve the health, safety, and well-being of the residents, workers, and visitors. To accomplish this, we champion health equity, prevent, mitigate, and monitor illness, encourage healthy behavior, and foster health resiliency. A few of our accomplishments. Our big accomplishment this year was related to housing. We developed and implemented a multi-level housing support program. This includes implementing a $90,000 ARPA contract with housing families to focus on tenant landlord issues, eviction issues, notice acquits. They've been able to secure over $100,000 of RAF funding for our Revere residents in need. We also have intensive case, housing case management support, and we've been able to secure permanent housing for nine previously unhoused individuals this year. We also strengthened capacity by implementing a new standardized case management software. It's called Apricot. It houses all of our case management programs, so we can have streamlined reporting, and it's a really, it's a good tool that we can all document in at the same time. Another highlight, we had a mobile produce market in the summer at Sandler Square. We've been continuing to do Food for Free programming here at City Hall. We've also created a food working group, which is a monthly meeting of community members in food access and justice space through the Mass in Motion grant. Our childhood immunization program is expanding each year. This year, we delivered approximately 1,000 school-age mandatory vaccines to Revere public school students. That's a collaboration between us and the school nurses. We hosted another year of the Warming Center. We expanded the length of the contract, and we serviced approximately 100 unique individuals over three months. Finally, we grew the resiliency of the city's health resiliency by completing a full replacement of all AED machines and city buildings, and we've trained municipal staff on AED and Narcan delivery. Our goals for next fiscal year, I'll just quickly go through four goals. We want to create and implement a long-term spending plan for the opioid abatement funds with guidance from the Opioid Abatement Working Group. Solidify a working partnership with the Haas Wellness Center to ensure that wellness programming is available for those in recovery or struggling with addiction. We want to expand both the mobile market and the farmers' market programs through increasing nonprofit partnerships and resident uptake of SNAP and HIP. And finally, organize and standardize public health emergency preparedness protocols, things like a one-pager MOU and inventories and workflows. And that's it for my mission, accomplishments, and goals.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions from the council? Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Buck, for coming. You run an excellent department. You're a great department head. I enjoyed working with you when I was superintendent, and you do fabulous work. I just have a few questions. The total salary other is about $400,000. Is that through some grant or ARPA?
Yeah, it represents multiple different grants. We have a lot of grants that come through the Public Health Department, things like Mass in Motion, ARPA. We have a revolving fund. We have multiple other small grants that we kind of piece together, but yeah, it's a combination of all those things.
All right. Pleasure. The Emergency Preparedness Manager, I see that's only funded for half, half a year. Is that job going January 1st?
I'll let Rich take that one.
Yes, that's one of the, again, an ARPA-funded position that we have to, we're going to begin attrition and distributing those duties between members of the Public Health Department.
Okay. I noticed there's seven nurses, and last year's budget, there were nine. Is that...
Do you want me to speak on this, Rich? So, yes, so remember, there's two kind of buckets of school nurses, the city side and the school side. So we've really tried to hire, under the school side, DESI-certified nurses this year, which I think is actually a big accomplishment, to try to streamline kind of the way that we do school nursing. So you'll see that the school nurses, that we try to maintain our city side nurses, but hire more on the school side.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed that there's no, a no-harm reduction person isn't mentioned here in the budget it was last. Is someone else doing those duties?
So we, we have two amazing outreach workers that we contract with, so we still have 35 hours of outreach support. It's through a contract, though, so they're not...
Not an employee, but contracted out?
Correct.
Okay. And does your office still do the mosquito spraying and mosquito control?
Yes.
So anyone in need of that would contact your office?
Yep, yep. It's the same process as it has been for the last couple of years. We can give them the contact information for Northeast mosquito, and we also submit weekly, like, public spraying for the city, city fields and parks that need to be sprayed. We are also, we'll be doing a reverse 911 soon to do two alerts in the beginning of the summer and at the end of the summer, right before the school year, to be spraying on the school property.
Okay.
So residents might see a reverse 911 about that. It's just because of state regulations, we have to notify people when we're spraying schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I just have one question, just for clarification. I noticed a line item for pest and rodent control, I think, under the DPW, but I'm noticing one here, too. So is there a difference, or...
Yeah, maybe Rich can speak specifically, but I can tell you that, so the Public Health Department manages the, kind of like, the resident side of pest and rodent control. So if people are, want to have their house evaluated by an exterminator, we do have a program where we can send an exterminator, exterminator out free of charge to have six treatments. And so between us and the 311 and Community Liaison Department, that's the program that we run. It's more resident-facing than potentially the DPW program. Thank you. All set.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming, Lauren. I talk to a lot of people, a lot of different agencies, and a lot of nonprofits and so forth, and you're well-respected. I have to say that. You really are. Everybody I talk to speaks highly of you. We haven't had a lot of contact, you and I, but I had an issue, and you addressed it the way I think it should have been addressed, and so I'm happy with that. But I want you to just keep up the good work, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Lauren. I just got a couple of questions. So with the abatement money, will, will you be doing, or has the office done a needs assessment, like, exactly, or when was the last one done? And were you thinking about doing stuff like that with the abatement money?
So, yeah, so a community needs assessment is conducted every, I think it's every two years, through the Public Health Collaborative that we're part of, which is Revere, Chelsea, and Winthrop. It has general health questions, but it does focus on substance use. But the, specifically for the opioid abatement money, we've created and just finalized our community survey, which is about 10 questions that will be on our website, and also our outreach workers are going to be, you going, when they're doing outreach, doing survey, you know, surveying questions with people that they come into contact at that time, kind of in person. And that will be, and then focus groups. So the, one of the questions on the community survey is, are you interested in joining a focus group? So that will be kind of our population that we pull from, as well as the Opioid Abatement Working Group, and just people that are outreach worker in SUD office know.
So if someone wanted to get involved in that, how would they, how would they go about doing that?
Sure. Actually, we'd love to have more members to the Opioid Abatement Working Group, so you can always reach out to the SUD office, and we have meetings every month. They're typically the third or fourth Wednesday of each month, and they're, they start at 6:00 PM, and they're held in our office, and we would welcome any, anyone to join.
Awesome. And last question. This is more, so I'm sure you've seen the stats that came out. So residents, Revere residents overall went down overdoses, Revere itself went up a little bit, but the BIPOC population in the city and throughout the state has seen an increase in overdoses. Are we doing anything to reach out to that community?
Yeah, it's a really good point. One of the things that I really hope for next year is, I have a grant written, and I haven't heard yet, to increase our outreach worker capacities to specifically focus on language capacity and BIPOC, you know, representative in that field. I totally agree with you. You know, the, the Public Health Department in general has a lot of diversity within it, but I think we recognize that, even in the, the work that I have with the BHU and the SUD department, we all recognize that I think it's, talking about substance use can be more taboo in, in the BIPOC population, so it can be something that we need to really tackle. So I think representation is always the first way to get, to go about that, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to expand to have representation in our outreach worker workforce.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Elder Affairs.
Thank you, Counselor Silvestri, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Deb, and have a great day.
And thanks, Counselors, for allowing me to present the Elder Affairs budget. The seniors make up 20% of the Revere population. That's one in five people are seniors. I want to thank this council on behalf of our seniors for, number one, just recently, increasing the amount of money and the number of seniors who will be able to take advantage of the real estate work-off program. It means a lot. One of the biggest problems is paying taxes for seniors, so it meant a great deal to them, and they appreciate when you remember them. This is more than a job for me, as you all know, and my staff, and we are here to deliver quality programs, information, advice, and access to resources. So with that being said, I won't go over accomplishments. You guys have all seen it, you've been there, which I appreciate it, and one of the first goals we have is to introduce more music and art programs at the senior center, hopefully more art. And that, what we found with that is that it does help elders with cognitive function, memory, self-esteem, so we're helping to see more of that. The second goal was to use the ARPA funds that we've been granted for building a new accessible ramp in the front of the senior center. That has gone out to bid, it came back, that we didn't have any bidders that were under what it should have been, so I believe it's going to go out again. It's necessary, it's needed, so we're hoping to, the money has to be spent. I believe Rich will confirm this. Money has to be spent by the end of the year, so we got to get this done. Third, we want to secure a Mass Doc community grant to purchase a new van for the senior center and hire a van driver to provide Revere seniors and veterans transportation to medical appointments outside Revere. As you know, our vans only go inside Revere. I'm happy to say that that van was purchased three years later. It's at the senior center. Today, we hired the van driver, and hopefully, we will begin in July to take seniors that need it, and we'll see how many need it to go into the Mass General, to the VA, to, it's just too hard for them to drive into Boston, it's hard for them to park. So I'm really hoping that this will assist our seniors. Once again, we're here to do whatever's best for them, and I would hope that you guys will let me know what I can do if you hear from them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deb, you do amazing work. Any questions from the council? Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Petzke, for the work you do down there. You have a great staff. I've been going to the celebrations and parties. They really are a good time.
Yeah, we thank you for your support, Counselor.
Oh, you're welcome. I just have one question. The van driver, it comes from other salaries. Do you know what pays that?
The van driver, the new van driver we just hired, well, the first van driver is a full-time one, and that comes from the state grant.
Okay.
Yeah, that $40,000 is the state grant.
Oh, and is there a charge for these seniors to do these trips?
No.
No.
No, Counselor Agenzio. It was the mayor, primary, or ego that, and I have to say, that agreed, I believe the council, too, that agreed that we should not be taking money.
Oh, no, I totally agree. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deb, I know, you know how much I respect you and the job you do with the seniors, and they love you down there, and for, for good reason. You take good care of them, and you really care about them, and you, you said it when you started here tonight, that this is a passion for you, it's not a job. We know your history and where you came from and all that, and I appreciate what you do, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Deb. I know you get all kinds of kudos, and I'm going to add to them. And you got, you do, since you've taken over, and the staff you have is the ultimate best that I've ever seen. You know, I know you've had good people here in the past. You lost Robert Hass, Counselor Hass, to another job, but you filled it in properly with Anna, and Susan Martelli took over, and she's working out great, and you know I do what I can for you.
You do. And, and thank you for pointing that out, Counselor, because I do want to say, I have the best staff in the city. I, I really firmly believe I have the best staff in the city. I hope they're all watching, because I really firmly believe that they work so hard, and our passion is the seniors. And you guys, we, we really appreciate it when you bring, and Mark knows, because he's worked for the, with the veterans as well, when you bring their, them to the table, and you ask them what they need, and you respond, it, it makes us, we're all going to be there.
Right. And not, and not, may I say, not only your staff, the Mystic Valley folks.
Yes.
Your volunteers that you have coming in.
Yes, you're right.
They love going there, not only for lunch, but just for the activities. And now that you have the building basically all to yourself, you can utilize more things for them to do, and I appreciate that, you know, being a member there, and, and dealing with all the folks that I've been going there for years, and I just love it, and I appreciate everything you do and how much they appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Deb, thank you very much for coming up tonight. You did a great job. You do a great job, amazing work down there with the seniors. You really stepped the whole program up, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Mark.
Next up is Veterans Affairs.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Isaac McDaniel, Director of Veteran Services.
Good evening, Isaac.
Really quick, Mr. Councilman, I'd like to bring up what we've done in the past, and the past we've had. One, I've had large shoes, two, to try, attempt to fill, but nonetheless, over the last couple of months, I've given a go with my dedicated team. A couple accomplishments we've had have been, have been, one, and one of the largest is the food bank, the distributing food to the veterans of Revere who are in need. This is an estimate of two, excuse me, 450 we do monthly, and that includes fresh, fresh and stable-shelf fish, excuse me, fresh groceries. And then another highlight we have is our Chapter 115s, that we have an estimated of, we projected 450 for this year, but going back, we were around, what is it, 80? We're at 40 as of this moment. That's with open cases, and nonetheless, the filing of VA claims. Going forward, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to expand what we are currently doing, not only do as much that's needed, but also focus on an outreach. As taking this position, I understand the veterans that we are serving, but understanding that majority of those individuals are around the age of 50-plus, which means that from the legal age to join the military, which is 17, to those serving at least four years, we'll pit them at an age around 23 to that 50, meaning that we have at least 60% of individuals that we haven't tapped into. And by doing this, we're having to step up our outreach, the legal way would be doing by really not only banking on connections that, that we have, but building those relationships with local military units, with, with those service members, really allowing others to know that the VSO, exactly what it is, but the benefits that we provide, which is at zero cost to, to our veterans, and the, and so pending any questions I ask that this, that this be approved?
Great job, Isaac.
Thank you.
No one touches veterans' budgets. Any questions from the council? Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isaac, this probably isn't a question for you, more towards Mr. Viskey. One of the, the Assistant to the Director, when looking at previous years over the budget to do comparisons, I noticed that the service date on this year's budget is September 1st, 2011. But in fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, the Assistant to the Director's service date is June 7th, 2001. And I just wanted to know if there was reasoning for that, why the date changed, or maybe it was wrong, or, I don't know.
I think some of it has to do with full-time versus part-time status, so I believe the day represented is the, the amount of full-time pensionable years there, but I will follow and make sure that's correct.
Thank you. And Isaac, you're doing a great job, man.
Thanks, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. President. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I met you just not too long ago, and you're very impressive, and you have a great staff, and I wish you a lot of luck. Just to kind of elaborate on President Cogliano's question, the Assistant to the Director, this year's salary is $200 less than it was last year. Everybody in the budget seems to have enjoyed a three, three and a half percent raise. I was wondering why that went down $200.
I can... Counselor, I think that is a, an error in, in trans, we did have some out-of-grade pay going on, and I believe when we brought the Assistant Director back, we may have took it from the previous year, so there may need to be adjustment on that, and I will follow up. I think you or someone else already brought that up, but we'll try to make that adjustment and see if we can amend that on the floor for final budget vote.
Thank you very much. And the veterans' benefits, the $705,000, that's, the city pays that, or is that, does that come from the state?
Well, that, we... Hello?
The quote is in the mail, okay?
We, we, we budget the $705,000 every year to pay for those veterans' benefits. Most, all of those benefits get reimbursed at 75% reimbursement through cherry sheet offsets. There are certain benefits that are actually 100% reimbursable, and there are also some benefits that are paid out that aren't eligible, but that's the pool of money we use to pay for all veterans' benefits, and we get reimbursed on, on the cherry sheet for most, most all of that appropriation.
Thank you very much. All set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isaac, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're the rookie in the team right now, but you have a great staff.
I do, and thank you.
Donna's been there, and she's, I think, believe you're the third VSO that she's been working with, starting with Nick Bua, and then with Mark, and now yourself. But one thing that's kind of sticks out to me on the disability payments to Revere veterans, projected for 2024 is $509,000, but projected for 2025 is $954,800, and '23 was $763. How come there's such a big difference in those numbers? And it's VA disabilities.
Could we, where exactly are you looking at right there? I want to make sure I give Isaac assistance. He's a little new, so I'll help with that.
It's on the sheet that you gave us.
Rich threw you to the council? So I might be able to clarify a little on that?
Well, you have any, you have any experience on this, sir?
I do, a little bit. So what I believe you're looking at is the veterans' claims, so how they sent into the city yearly? Is that, is that where he's getting that, Isaac?
No, on the back, on the back of the sheet that gave us, on the bottom, there's a chart.
Measurement performance?
It's a VA disability payments to Revere veterans.
Yes. So, so each year, there's a cheat that's sent out from the VA that breaks down how many payments come to veterans of the city by zip code. When that's sent to us, we get it. So if veterans pass away, or veterans get accepted on claims, you're going to see a fluctuation in numbers. So it's money that comes from the VA federally to veterans of the city of Revere. So, i.e., a veteran with a disability, 20%, 10% is included in that. Anyone with 100, anyone with a percentage of a rating that receives a check from the VA is included in those numbers you see today.
You know, $450,000 worth?
There was probably approved in this year.
Would have been that much?
Yes.
Okay. No, you know, fine, you know, I was just, it just stuck out such a big number, I was, I was questioning it. But, you know, overall, you know, your department is great. You take care of all of us that are needed, and the things that are done with the food bank and other things with the, with the memorial poles and the food, and the food for the troops overseas come Christmas time, it's just overwhelming. And I congratulate you for your future in dealing with Donna and, and your other staff.
And Julia. Thank you. Sir, once again, thank you. And touching, just linking that last question you had to me, something that the office has currently been working on is upgrading or resubmitting claims for a higher percentage, not claims necessarily that were started in the VSO office, but those who chose to go elsewhere, now understanding that Revere has such a strong-posed VSO office, they're, they're coming back around, and they're, not that they're coming back around, but we're able to, we're submitting new claims and resubmitting claims for a higher percentage. That's increasing our money.
Yeah, okay. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may throw something at you, that came up last night about the veteran memorial signs. I was very surprised that the new signs are not having gold stars, you know, that you're just doing the red, white, and blue stripes. News to me, news to a lot of people, never knew it was coming, I don't know why it was stopped, and even the replacement signs, you know, I was told that they're not putting the gold stars on, which I disagree with. You know, if the replacement person had a gold star on it, they should be getting the gold star back. You know, if the new ones weren't killed in action... You know, if the new ones weren't killed in action, and if that's, you know, what, you know, what the reason is, I can kind of understand that, because a lot of the vets that have passed away weren't killed in combat, you know, from old age, and, you know, and we're doing one tomorrow for Elliot Schwartz, and he's got a red, white, and blue on stripes. And like I said, if I didn't say, when we did it last year, there was a gold star on the, on the sign that we did, but now there isn't. And I was kind of upset at that, but, and I think, you know, the 20 signs that are missing, that have, that have, and I mentioned this last night, that have been missing since 1978, since the blizzard of 78, probably before your time.
A little.
Yeah. But, you know, I've been trying to get those replaced, and I've asked for money to be put in the, in the budget for it, and I was told that there's enough money to do what we're looking for, and it's still not done. So hopefully, with the new, new staff that we have in the Sign Department, we'll be able to get those hopefully fixed this year. I'm not looking for dedications for each one, just to replace the ones that the families want to remember their loved ones.
Sir, let me catch that for you. I definitely appreciate you bringing up the, the concern, but I'm even happier to bring you up the solution and just take the little time to give you the, the reason why. So the moving from, from the gold star, which in a larger spectrum represents gold star family, a family who's lost a father, brother, son, daughter, and so you're absolutely correct when you mentioned that each of those individuals were, were killed in action or killed overseas or even killed here stateside, which would still make their family a gold star family. With that being said, the, the proposal that I pushed up today, and this is in the background, is we're going to continue to go ahead with the, with the blue, white, and red representing our nation's colors, removing the gold star and honoring the gold star families. And so we understand that, that not each family or each, I understand the perspective of a star, even if it was silver star, but as, as you well aware of, a silver star is a medal. And so sometimes, from the outside, we may see gold stars missing. For me, I understand that belongs to a family. A silver star is distinguished. A bronze star is, is one with valour, is also dignified, and then, all the stars are dignified. And so being able to determine for, for those who aren't aware what the purpose of the star was for, it was a quick switch, but it brought comfort to. It was my first week that I, that I came, I was able to attend Capitol Hill with the, with the government, with the governor, and there I met with gold star families. And it wasn't just them that brought up the, our gold stars, is it, why are, where are the rest of the gold star families? And it was a little tweak, and that little tweak brought more sincerity. It showed that we were listening and that we were really wanting to make a difference. And so I, I thank you, and I pour you for, for bringing it up and say those, I believe you said 27 or 17 flags that were missing about a decade before I was born?
The signs.
The signs, yes, thank you. I'm glad that you brought that up to me, because I'm not only am I aware of it now, but as of now, we have a plan going forward on how to get those, how to get those memorial poles up, memorial signs. So if I come back asking for a little bit more resources, we understand that there are good works happening, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, and, you know, I asked for the more money to have it done. You know, I'm not looking to change any that are on there now.
Sure.
But, and be honest with you, you know, I've been involved with this thing for 25 years, and never, ever, until just recently, was that gold star issue ever described. There was a person that was KIA'd back then, you know, and everybody that got a plaque, a black sign, got a star because they were in the service.
Sure.
You know, and this is new with the gold star families and the silver star. That was never, ever, ever brought up in all my years dealing with seven or eight different VSOs. You know, so I was kind of upset that I learned that, not being told about it, you know, and that's one of the things that I, I stress is communication.
I agree with you, sir.
You know, and, you know, I know Mark's been involved with it for many years, and he's tried to tweak different things, and, you know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not looking for a dedication or, you know, some kind of, something that's a ceremony for a lot of these. The one tomorrow, yes, deserves it. But just in general, I just want these other ones replaced.
Sure.
Because all the families, they don't live in Revere anymore, but they were brought up here. And they, they contact me, where's my father's plaque? Was, you know, it was up there, it's missing. You know, it's never been put back. And, you know, and I, I think we ought to make an exerted effort to replace everyone that's been, that's missing and correct some of them that have been taken down or knocked down and the star not replaced.
And, sir, once again, we're fully, I speak for, not only for myself, but the entire office and to say the veterans of Revere, we honor those past, present, and those future. And so it's not a question of giving honor back to those that honors due, to say those memorial poles will be up. Now, I'm careful to say that they will, as in, hopefully, I don't have to make that sign, because we may see Crayolas and cardboard sign, but nonetheless, I do assure you that those, those boards, excuse me, those memorial poles will be reestablished and, and replaced.
And if you need more money, just come to us. That, for something like that, I guarantee that every single counselor up here will not say no.
Once again, sir, I thank you. Consider it done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isaac, welcome. You're still new in my eyes, and, you know, I certainly am impressed with your resume, and I voted for you on the Appointments Committee, and I'm happy I did.
Thank you.
But you're on a honeymoon here now, so there are some protocols that some of us like to continue. I happen to disagree with my colleague on the gold star, because I, over the years, have heard from many families that they were disgusted that we were putting gold stars on everybody's memorial, because they are for gold star families. So I'd be in favor of having, having it just for gold star families, have the gold star. And that means changing a lot of signs, and I don't know how we go about doing that, but that's, that's something I would, I would want to do. And it's not, I've heard from former VSOs and people that say, why are you doing this? This shouldn't be. And so I know my, my colleague might not have heard that, but I've heard it from a lot of people. So that's one thing. The other thing is that, you know, I consider Donna Driesen like a foundation stone in that VSO office. And I think a lot of us up here do. And I heard some rumors that her pay was being cut, and I was upset with it, but I didn't confirm that. So I, you know, I'll take that up with the CFO if that's the case. He doesn't want any part of it. Okay.
Sir, to say this, when it was brought to, when I saw it, I questioned what was before me as well, too.
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
Given the, it's okay. Given the explanation that was, was given to me, I, I questioned it. I'd had a conversation with all of our staff and understanding, really, I say the, the money that I'm, that I'm requesting is exactly what we're, what we're looking for. To say it, perhaps it's even quite shy, when I was mentioning earlier to, to Mr. Chairman on going out to other communities, what we're, what's happening is great, what we could be doing or should be doing is more so. I, I agree with, one, the, the pay for the staff, not only that, understanding that sometimes there are things that need to be done, and not to say that we're exactly, that we can't do it, because I'm a United States soldier and I will get it done, but nonetheless, the support that yous are providing to us is extremely, extremely valuable, it's viable. Without it, we can continue doing what we're doing. And I understand the small part on understanding, perhaps being, being young, as Mr. Ira mentioned, I say, yes, the idea of bringing someone in with, with fresh blood, having understanding, having strategic approach to certain situations, gives me the, the leverage of seeing that that was good, but this can be better. And the immediate effect isn't for the right now, but for the, for the years to come. And with that benefit, I'm willing to sometimes tuck my chin and say what may be contrary to the way, as you mentioned, things have been done in Revere. Once again, that the not's bad, but if there's, if I seek and see a room for a little bit of improvement, once again, I tuck my chin, understanding that I'm speaking for those who are no longer here, those who are present, and those who are to come.
Well, you know, I think that you'll, you'll never get more support than you'll get from the City Council, and, and, you know, you're running the, you're the VSO now, and, you know, we're going to follow what you do, and I like the approach you're taking, except, like I said, there's a few issues that we can talk about in private, but you're doing a great job. I know you're going to do a great job in the future, and, and you have, you have the right vision, and you have the right attitude, that you're, you're fresh blood, you're in here with new ideas, and...
Respecting the old.
You want to, you're going to, but you're also going to keep, you know, the tradition of...
Correct.
So I'm, you know, I'm thrilled with you, and I know you do a good job, but you also have to protect the, the things around you.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. Chairman. Four years ago, I started this, the food truck, and I want to bring it back up. I know you mentioned it, Isaac, and the counselors to my left did as well. And four years ago, I was given a title by the former VSO, which was the CEO of the Veteran Food Bank, which stands for Chief Emptying Officer. And I have emptied that food truck, and I'm only bringing this up because I am putting everybody on the spot, and I am inviting everyone in the City Council, and anybody who wants to, to give back to the veterans, come, and that is a great way to do it. Empty that truck, bag that food, pass it out. You will never get more gratification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, Counselor. Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, I did get a response from my assistant on the Assistant to the Director, and her, her position had been upgraded on the salary chart, and there happened to be two lines with Assistant Director on the salary chart, and she happened to take the wrong one. So I would expect on the 24th, I may have a small amendment to this budget to make her whole, and I apologize for the error.
That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Isaac, welcome to the club, bud.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I just want to say, keep doing a great job, man. Shine like you are, brother, and bring, bring your own cheery and put it on top, man. Do you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commission on Disabilities?
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Happy birthday. They beat me to the punch.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, welcome, fellow counselors. Ralph DeChico, Revere Commission on Disabilities. I know that you all got the packet, so we don't have to go through the mission statement, but briefly wanted to read out for the, for the public, the 2024 accomplishments. We've constantly been updating and modifying the disability page in the city websites with a point of information for disabled residents and families. One question that I did get tonight, tonight from Counselor Novoselsky is in relationships to resources that we put, if we, could we put specific companies for, for different services? But we don't like to put specific companies, because we don't want to do, play any favoritisms for any companies to do any type of work related on any equipment. So what we do do, and what I do on there, is I put agencies that they can contact, that they get the resources from, because you do not want to do, when you're in a public entity like the city, you do not want to favor any specific companies for that. But you can't give an agency what resources, such as Boston Center for Independent Living, they would be able to give those resources, because that's what they're there for, not a municipality. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also, we received a $21,000 grant to evaluate the Judge v. Colola Community Center regarding accessibility issues and the needs. Just basically trying to finish up on that. Of course, some of the work that, that we wanted to get done there was in regards to the accessibility for the pool, the chairlift. But as everyone knows, trying to get contractors to come and do the work is like trying to pull teeth on your own, unless you really want to be in pain. So I've been battling for like two and a half months to get the contractors there. The pots have been ordered to go and do that. So it's now the end of the fiscal year, the money's already been appropriated, but it's very difficult to get them. They're telling you they're going to go there one day, and then they don't go, and then it takes about another month to get them to get back to you with another explanation why they weren't there, but that is in the process. Also, through this, the Revere City Council, we would be able, we were able to create a revolving fund after passing and adopting MGL 40, Section 22G, which states that any city or town which has accepted the provisions of Section 8A is hereby authorized to allocate funds received from fines assessed for violations of handicap parking to the Commission on Disability Funds, now received and discounted will be used for programs, projects, or equipment for a disabled community. So that has been established, and that, that is a tremendous help. And as you can see, located in the chart as of April, and I haven't gone the updated one, there was at that time $9,500 was already in there, so that money could be used for that. As for our fiscal year 2025 goals and objections, objectives, this is one goal that I've put in there for numerous years since I started and revamped the Commission on Disabilities, that the Commission on Disability should just be more than just a commission, it should be a full-time department, whether that was me or someone else, because it's, it's a department that's necessary. And the objective is to be able to continue providing this every time resources for the disabled residents of Revere. Another goal for 2025 is to pursue grant opportunities to establish an All Abilities Day Out at Revere Beach for our, for our residents with physical and intellectual disabilities. As an example, the City v. Boston at Constitution Beach does, does a program like this through Triangle. I'm happy to say that I did receive a grant, and we are having one this year, August 17th at Revere Beach. I know there's another very big event that day called Row Row to Revere, but this is the day that I was able to do, because I'm trying to utilize equipment that's coming from the DCI's Universal Access Equipment, Universal Access Program the week before, because they'd be coming down with a truck, load of accessibility beach mobility wheelchairs, accessible mats. So I'm trying to do it in conjunction, because it comes from the west state, western Massachusetts. So I'm trying to make it easier for them, so they don't have to bring the truck back and forth. So we'll be doing that and having DJs, there's going to be registration, it's going to be a free event, so we will be doing that, and I'm hoping that that can be done yearly after that, because it's going to be a great day, and we'll pray for no, no rain and great weather. So that's, that's one thing. Another, another goal is to establish a permanent policy within the city of Revere that all publicly-run city meetings and boards have live-stream hybrid capabilities, both online and through Revere TV. The objective, this would allow people of all abilities, languages, ages, and schedules to be able to take part and have a voice at all public meetings. Live translations would also be then capable due to technology. The Commission on Disabilities is looking to pilot an ASL interpreter program at our monthly Zoom meetings, with the hope this expanding to all city meetings. I've also testified at public, at the State House for hybrid meetings back several months ago, and that is in the, it's going to be coming up again in the state legislation in July, to see if they can finally try and get some final approval for cities and towns. As I've mentioned several times, when cities and towns state that financial, that's, is a financial barrier to have a hybrid aspect to meetings, that is not, that's not a barrier, that's not a barrier. A barrier, talk to somebody who has a disability, that's a barrier. Money is not a barrier, so there should not be a financial barrier to that. Number four, the last goal that I have on here was to create a living, working ADA plan for the City Capital Improvement Plan, as outlined in the City of Revere Transition Plan that was done by EMG Engineering. This would allow the city to make a schedule of ADA improvements to municipal buildings outlined in the fully detailed documents and assessments done by EMG. A plan should be created so that each year, the city can update this document and make sure work is being done, so that our buildings meet the requirements, not only for our residents, but also for our employees. I have actually been starting doing that, and they, the Sign Department is actually, preliminary is trying to get some more signage around the building here at City Hall to let residents and anyone visiting the city know where our accessible entrances are from the outside of the building. This, I've been working on this for a couple of months now, so they'll be trying to get that, along with inside the building with more signage. There's a proposal out there right now to get accessible signage at all the city department offices, including in Braille, which is part, that was just, was outlined in this transition plan. Secondly, I've also just completed for FY25 for ADA, MOD ADA municipal grants, that we know we have worked that's on the horizon for a couple of the department offices downstairs. So I've just applied for about $140,000 in grants for FY25 that we hopefully may be able to get. So what I did, instead of lumping them in as one So what I did, instead of lumping them as one grant, I did them as four separate grants to hopefully allow us to a better shot if we at least get, we don't have to get one. There's four different grants total there.
Thank you, Ralph. Any questions from the council? Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not basically a question, but it's just a little history on the Commission on Disability. I believe that the very first director we had was Stephen Rich, and then we had Cindy Tadelman after that. And they both did a wonderful job, like Ralph is doing now, getting grant money and doing things in the city. You know, it took us almost 12 years to get the ramp done at the American Legion Building, which is, everybody knows is a city building. And the only thing we need now is restroom facilities upgraded. But it took us a long time to do that, and I'm still working on getting Stephen's sign at the corner of True Street, you know, put back. I saw the old one behind the McKinley School laying in the trash. So we'll still work on that, but thank you for all the work you're doing and continuing from their memories of what they were doing because they worked real hard at it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ralph. And anyway, I told Deb, the director of Elder Services, that, about her passion for her job, and I got to say the same about you. We don't always agree on a lot of issues, but the one thing I know is that you have tremendous passion for what you do, and you really help a lot of people with disabilities, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. DeChico. I've worked with you over the years and for a lot of years, and echoing what Counselor Zambudo just said, very passionate. You really take your job serious, and your advocacy for the handicapped and disabled community is outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ralph, great job. I got to say, you know, here in the States, we're a little bit further behind with ADA and ADA activities. We're far behind a lot of other countries. So I'm glad that you're coming up with these ideas, beach days, and DCI are starting to take that move towards them, to get ADA and people with disabilities to beaches and doing things that we can. So keep up the good work, and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to Culture and Recreation, Library.
Good evening. I'm Diana Luongo, the director at the library. I have two and a half pages of accomplishments, so I will not sit here and read them all. I have several goals, and one of them is to complete our newly created space for a media room, which is in the works for a Make-A-Space program. And another is to create a program around citizenship. I'm also working on that and trying to receive a grant for that. Also trying to just increase our outreach. Hopefully, our Bookmobile will be here in this fiscal year, and we could utilize the Bookmobile to further accomplish that goal. And we are looking to continue to look for ways to increase our cultural programs and resources. And lastly, we are planning to partner with the Chamber of Commerce to promote local businesses and advertise the resources that the library has to offer for the city and patrons of Revere. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Director Luongo. Any questions from the council? Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, Diana. So just a few questions. You mentioned the building of the media room, and I'm looking at that $260,000 hike. Is that one of the reasons that we have, part of the safety and facilities improvements throughout the building? So adopted in '24 was $40,000. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? My apologies, the mayor did not request that. So Cultural Council funding. Last year, there was supposed to be a vote on some funding for the library. I don't know if that ever went through. Did you guys receive that? There was funding that had to be released through the Cultural Council. I remember because we had to do some emergency appointments to make sure there was a quorum to vote for it, so.
No.
You never received that?
No.
Do you know the amount off the top of your head that it was supposed to be?
I do not, no.
Okay, okay. And the last question, you guys have a ton of programming, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. Do you keep track of how many people go to each, or how many children go to each program, and what is the difference between the younger children and teenagers? Could you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, so we keep track of pretty much every single thing that exists in the library between walking in the building, sitting at the computers. Everything is tracked statistically for state and federal funding, which we have to report every year in August, so it's budget season for that, and everything we do matters. I have, I think, the very first accomplishment, I kind of give a brief description of 4,122 patrons for the year. That number isn't made up. We do keep track of every single thing we do. So pretty much every program we have is successful at the library.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming, and you do a terrific job. And, you know, I don't have a lot, I don't have a lot to do with the library because I'm an old guy now, and I get my, I get my stuff online. But, you know, all I've heard about you since you took over is good things, and you're doing it on very little resources, and I would just ask you to keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diana, thank you. You know, I know you work hard, you have a lot of great staff, a lot of volunteers that come into the library. And unfortunately, the library is at the bottom of the list of the totem pole. And one thing, I know maybe about 14, 15 years ago, there was a request for the city council to put in like $7 million for a new, a new library or an addition, because I know we're not going to get rid of the old Carnegie building because it's historical. But adding on to it was a thought back then, but unfortunately, it was a matching grant, and back then, we couldn't afford it. But, you know, I still say we ought to pursue something and work with the Immaculate Church about going over the parking area so we don't, they don't lose any parking. We can do it on piles, on stilts, and do a couple floors of new library added on to the old building to try and expand it. I know it's a huge, huge, huge project, but I think it's something that, you know, if we got grant writers to look into this, if you know anybody that can look into it, I think they were talking maybe $10 million for a whole new addition onto that for two floors. And because they want to try and make it still look historical, so you still got to kind of mend it in with what's there now. And again, we don't want to hurt the church, even though we gave them the land for the new church, you know, through the city. And I think, you know, if we talk to the new folks, you know, that are there now and try and work something out with them, or even think about it for the future, that, you know, hopefully, we can, I know we got a high school we have to pay for, but if we look into the future on it and see what we can get and how much it's going to cost to do an addition, because I think it's really, really needed for the amount of people that come through there and what, you know, what you want to do with it. So, you know, I look forward, if anybody can come up with something, you know, I'm there for you, so. I say good luck.
Thank you, Counselor.
Can I respond to that, actually?
Yes.
So thank you very much. I don't think we're at the bottom of the totem pole, but, so for a grant for new buildings, you have to have a strategic plan on the books, and I don't, I haven't been, I've qualified, full certified, not qualified, certified director for more than a year, and you had to be a certified director in order to create a strategic plan. So we have a committee we just formed, we, me and the Board of Trustees, and we will be reaching out to other stakeholders within the city. So maybe you'd want to be one of those stakeholders to be part of that. And once you have a strategic plan in place, you're allowed to request grant money for such things as building a new library, and that is on the top of our list. Realistically, we know there's a high school being built, so that would be something that we look forward to, but the strategic plan needs to be in place first, and it is something we're working on.
Good. Glad to hear.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Thank you, Director Luongo. You're doing an amazing job. You're, you've grown the library's recreation plans and ideas tremendously, so just keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Next up is Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mr. Hinahosa. How are you?
I'm well. I'm well. Good evening, everybody. Michael Hinahosa, Director of Parks and Recreation. If you don't mind, I'll start off with a little statement, just on mission statement. Parks and Recreation Department is committed to enhancing the quality of life for all citizens of the city of Revere by providing active recreational, educational, and cultural programming services for all age groups, and it is our objective to provide parks and recreation facilities that are safe, accessible, and aesthetically pleasing to the entire community. Sorry, I need my glasses. Our goal is to provide a multiple of offerings for all ages, and by the sheet that I just handed out to you, we are succeeding very nicely. We provide hundreds of programs while interacting with thousands of residents. Our department has grown significantly over the last 12 years since I took over the position, not only in personnel, but in programming and responsibility. In addition to the programming that we offer, we facilitate all rentals of our athletic facilities and share in the maintenance of said facilities. Furthermore, our department relaunched the George v. Colaula Community Center, which includes one of the largest programs that we offer, Core Aquatics. We currently are servicing hundreds of swimmers. In addition, we have launched new programs such as volleyball, pickleball, and ukulele classes over at the Colaula Community Center. Not to mention a lot more programming, but those are just some of the new ones. And lastly, our largest endeavor to date, the opening of the Robert J. Haas Junior Health and Wellness Center, which I'm sure you have a couple of questions on. That's just a very quick overview of what my department does, and I would just like to add one thing as a little bit of competition, but, oh, I think Deb just left, but I do, I do think I have the best staff in the city. So. Little competition. That's what I have. I'm sure we have some questions.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions from the Counselor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, thank you for being here, and I just want to publicly take an opportunity to thank you for how much you've helped my family and my business when we were in a rough spot last year. So thank you very much for everything you did for us. I am going to ask some questions about the Wellness Center. So right now, what are the operational costs per year to run the facility with payroll, you know, maintenance, cleaning?
Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah.
Well, you can see, the next budget after Parks and Recreation is the Health and Wellness Center. Estimated cost to run that facility would be $1,050,000, round numbers.
Thank you. And how many? I understand what it takes to build up a client-based business, so I'm just curious about the numbers, where we are now as far as enrollment, where we need to be, and a timeline of when you think we'll get there.
I can give you an exact number.
Yeah, let's do it.
As of 5 o'clock, we have 771 members.
I can, I can answer the second part of that question, and I've been giving some information to Counselor Argenzio and Amilo about fiscal year 2025 and beyond. As everybody's well aware, we did use some of our OPER, our recovery money to open the Health and Wellness Center to promote wellness in the city, especially for city employees that we hope will use the facility and stay in good health, which will certainly offset the cost of our health insurance, which is self-insured. We are hoping that by fiscal year 2026, it is a full-cost recovery operation. We're working on cash flow, income and expense pro forma reports, and at preliminary right now, I'm not ready to turn a face forward because I want to audit it a little more and check it out, but we think somewhere between 1,800 and 2,000 members will allow us to be a full-cost recovery for all operating expenses and employees. So I think we're up to, like Michael said, 780 members right now, and it may be a challenge, but I think it's certainly attainable. I know some of the competition just raised their prices for their membership. I think we offer a more robust program. A lot of people have a great affection toward the old Nautilus, or whatever you want to call it, Joe's Gym. It's been a million different things.
Greater bus and fitness.
I remember it as Wales Plus, but that was a long time ago. But anyway, we really hope that we can keep this going and sustain for a long time coming.
Absolutely, and, you know, I have a membership there. I'm doing my part. Whether I go or not is a different story, but I've been to the facility. It's really beautiful, and I'm really crossing my fingers and hoping to get that enrollment up and keep it open for the foreseeable future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Hinahosa. You're doing a great job at the Recreation Center. You have a great staff, and congratulations on your umpiring achievements.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Just a few questions. On your staff at the Recreation Center, I noticed the Assistant Director has been removed, and the travel and tourism duties have been, went to workforce development. Is that correct? Jim?
That is correct, Counsel.
Now, there's two new positions there. They're not marked as new, but it's Activities Program Coordinator, which is vacant, and Fitness Liaison. They're not marked as new employees, but they're, they didn't appear in the budget last year. Is that?
That's us trying to begin to assimilate these jobs into the parking rec from the Health and Wellness Center. We started off with six full-time employees budget in there, and we're trying to slowly get towards, again, full-cost recovery.
Okay, and I noticed they come, those two salaries come from other sources? Is that OPER funds or?
The, one of them is OPER funds, and I'm sorry, the other position is paid from the rec revolving account, and the aquatics manager is paid from that revolving fund for the Garfield Pool.
Okay, thank you very much. You use two software programs to conduct business at the Parks Department. Is that correct?
It is now correct, yes. We're phasing one of them out.
Okay, because I had asked for some information a while ago, and it took like seven weeks, a little over seven weeks to obtain. Is that piece of software, is that antiquated? Will you be replacing that or?
No.
No?
No, no. We, so I think that the requests came through Rich, didn't come through me, so that's what I would say, is that I've provided that information as the requests came in.
Okay.
They may have put it into Excel or whatever, but that's.
Okay, so in the future, that, that information could come a little bit quicker.
Counselor, I think, to answer your question, we first provided the request, we provided information, and then when you drilled, one of the, some drilled down information, we worked with Michael to actually get access to that software, and now the Department actually does have access, and we're getting more familiar with the types of reports that were requested. So apologize for the delays, but that's more on my office than Michael's.
Thank you very much. The Health and Wellness Center, I know at the inception, the idea was to use OPER funds for salaries, for equipment, for upgrades, and then as the OPER funds were expended, the revenue would take over, and hopefully, it would become a self-sustaining building. Do we know how much OPER funds were spent there?
We committed $2.1 million of OPER funds to the Health and Wellness Center, and that's the money we continue to draw down on, and that is, that's the total amount. We haven't spent the $2.1 million, but that's the amount that we have allocated. We haven't spent the $2.1 million, but that's the amount that we have allocated for that program.
Okay, and then I noticed there was some money spent out of the revolving account for the Health and Wellness Center, and also the, an account at the DPW for repairs to city buildings, some money was spent out of that also. That's correct?
You're correct, yes. I was waiting for you to finish, sorry.
Do you think the bulk of the spending has been done yet?
Yeah.
The spending part's pretty much come to a?
The spending part has pretty much come to an end. I mean, there is a piece of equipment here or a piece of equipment there. My guess is that our spin classes, as an example, are pretty full, every class. We could probably fit three more bikes into the room, so I could see us purchasing, you know, one bike at a time, just to continue with demand as our clientele continues to grow, so.
But the major spending is over, as you would say.
The major spending is over. I mean, we have a.
I went down last week and took a tour of the facility. It is beautiful. It really came out nice, I have to say. It's a very nice facility, and it's gorgeous.
Thank you. I mean, and not to interrupt, but I do think that we do have a very good business plan and a very good model of what we're offering, and I think what we have found off of that 770 is that we're not losing anybody, and we, in the month of June, which is typically a slow month anyways, once the weather gets warm, I think we're up 71 members in the month of June. I mean, we're, and that, June 13th, so we're still averaging well over, you know, 100 members a month that we're adding, so we're pretty confident that our business model and our plan will succeed.
Okay, and the business model that I read when, at the inception, in the Harvard School of Government, they seem to allude to like 2,500 members or 2,800 members to keep the place.
We, those numbers were just plug-and-play numbers. We were talking about, you know, memberships, and there was a basic $10 membership.
Okay.
Maybe to compete with Planet Fitness at that time. Our basic membership is at $20, so the numbers had changed that we may not need 2,500 members to get to our number. Based upon the numbers, and I don't wanna, I know Rich is ready to jump in, but based upon just growing those numbers to 1,800 for fiscal year '25, we're breakeven, so.
Counsel, just to add to that, we, taking the 780 members we have now, there's three types of membership. I think it's a $20, $30, $40s. So, we took that, we took that ratio of the 780 members, and we applied adding members every month at that apportionment, and again, right around 1,800 to 2,000 members, depending on how you split it up, looks like where we'd be at a breakeven point, and honestly, that doesn't include some things like bringing in more vending machines for drinks. I think we sell water for a dollar a piece now, but I think there's, other than the memberships, I believe there's other revenue-producing opportunities down there, and we're gonna continue to explore those, but we're certainly committed to try to make this something that is fully self-sustainable and not need general fund appropriations.
Okay, and to date, you've collected about $110,000? Is that?
That's close.
Okay.
I think we've actually collected more than that, but some of that money is, again, the money that we generate from that, we're able to use to put back into the center, so I think that might be the net revenue, but I can double-check that number. I thought we were close to 200,000, but I cannot double-check that.
Okay, the information that you had sent me had said 108, so.
Dues collected through this week is 110,000, 700 and something dollars.
Okay, and, okay, and then the revenue every month from the monthly memberships, is that about $16,000 or $17,000 now? Okay. So, the budget as presented, there's funding from several sources, appropriated money, appropriated money in DPW for utilities, you're gonna be spending some money out of the revolving account, and then the rest is revenue. And that revenue forecast, is that based on about 100 new members a month?
Exactly. We have it as a plug-and-play, so we can, we set it up so that we can put in different scenarios, and it's gonna spit out different results, but.
So, if you add 100 members a month, this budget then becomes viable, so.
Again, preliminarily, yes. I don't wanna go too public with that, but I guess I'm public enough if I'm on TV, but there's certainly some, as early as this morning, we were working on it and refining that document, so we, you know, within two weeks, by the 24th, we may even have that more refined with a deliverable to check out.
Okay, thank you. And that report that you sent me, I think Mr. Perella generates it. If you could add me to that month, that monthly email list, and anyone else that maybe is interested?
Happy to do so.
All right. Thank you, and good luck, and you know, I hope the memberships come.
They're coming.
You know, that you anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kelly.
Well, thank you for being here. Counselor Argenzio was very thorough, so he asked mostly all my questions, but I just wanted a little clarification. The $2.1 million in Opera funds, so have they been extinguished, or are they still being used? Do you anticipate, you know, are you using them all? I'm kinda, I just want some clarification on that.
Yeah, we used, most of them, we do, we are funding employees from that right now, but most of the, I'll call it fixed costs, have been expended. We did use that to pay for the lease and some of the operating costs, but again, as we generate revenue, the idea was, I mean, we haven't appropriated any more than $2.1 million, so the, any funds that we may need to subsidize, that would come from appropriations from this body.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike and Richie, I'm not gonna go beyond the Haas Center at this point. You know, I think we've heard enough, you know, it's, whether it's, I don't wanna say believable or not, but it's, you know, it's something that you're working on, and I'm gonna leave it at that. But just in general, you know, talking about you and your department, you say you've been here with 12 years. I remember when you came on board, and what you had then was this small, and now you have this large block of activities and personnel to deal with, which you have done an outstanding job with, and all your staff is great, like all the other staff, and I'm not saying that yours is the best or the worst or the middle, but they are great, great people, and they go beyond their jobs, let me say. You know, it's not that you're a clerk, you're a clerk plus, you're a worker plus. Everybody does what they're asked, and that's what, I was brought up that way, and I appreciate that. The one question I have to you is when we did Critters Park over, we talked about utilizing it as a soccer field.
Yep.
And it's been done for almost five years, if not more, and I haven't, I don't even see a net down there, and I don't see any markings that it's ever been used for soccer, and you've always professed soccer, 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 and here we have a field. It's not used all the time for baseball, and it's smaller for baseball.
Yeah, so it's really a lights issue. You know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of lights. You know, we're trying to keep it as an active-passive place to go down and play, and keep in the green space. So, we do have a few places like that, you know, in the city of Riviere, and I know we talked about this before, but I can, I could certainly line it, but our grass fields are very difficult to maintain, and when, once they become heavy-use fields, especially wrapped around soccer, it tears them up pretty good. So, we've been discussing other turf field or synthetic field options to have more soccer opportunities, including lights, so I don't know if that answered your question.
It did. I'm not totally pleased with it, you know. I can understand what you're saying, but you would think that other, there's something other than baseball and passive, because the only time it's used passively is with the school.
Right.
You know, during the school year.
Yeah.
You know, during the summer, there's very, very little baseball down there.
Yeah, yeah, just the weekends, right.
I think the field is, it's wasted.
Okay.
By not being utilized for at least something else, you know.
Sure.
Whether it be softball is another thing, but at least it could be used during the summertime for other things.
Okay.
And, you know, I still haven't seen the scoreboard even turn on since we.
Yeah, just for baseball. And the other reason is that we lost our JV team, so the high school did not have a JV program, so they were not using the scoreboard. I mean, that's where they played all their home games last year, so.
And I don't even know if the field's big enough for even JV now, with the way.
No, it is. It is, yeah. It's the right age group.
But down the road, I would like to see a mural put on that back wall.
Okay.
You know, if we can, you know, you and Planning and Development can work on, see what it would cost, you know, even if they put, you know, a similar Green Monster Red Sox scoreboard on there, like they have behind one of the businesses on Ocean Ave. You see the back, it has a Red Sox scoreboard back there, and plus some other sports that maybe, you know, there's something with soccer or nets, some kind of design with sports on it.
It's a good idea. I'll go with L. Baker.
It's a big wall to do. I know she and I talked about it, you know, when she was doing the basketball court, which really didn't turn out that well, but as far as the mural is concerned, but I, you know, people have asked me about that back wall, you know, about doing something and make it presentable, other than what it is now.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, but I wish you luck. I think you've been doing a great job, as I said, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, I think you do a wonderful job. I think that you were Mayor Rizzo's best hire.
Thank you.
And my colleague said, when you took over, you had this little mini organization. It wasn't really a mini, but compared to what you have now, it was a joke, and what you've done with, and a lot of times with not much resource, you've done great stuff for the youth of the city, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now that I'm throwing all these bouquets at you.
Here comes the dagger. All right.
Well, not the dagger, but you know that if anything, I'm a pessimist when it comes to finances, you know, and I'm very skeptical of the business model. I pray to God you people are right, and you're gonna have 2,000 members soon, and it's gonna pay for itself. I'm, you know, I'm skeptical because of the expenses to run the place. It's a stretch. I hope, I, you know, at least I feel better about you achieving that goal than the other goals that I've been voting against and talking about since day one up here, that taking a billion dollars off the tax roll and building a high school. You'll never convince me that's gonna work, but we'll see. You know, we've got projections that are, that are at best skeptical. I think you have a better shot of making your goal here at the Haas Center than the other project, so I got my fingers crossed, but aside from all that, I am grateful for you, and I hope you wanna stay here a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
And I just, to quickly summarize the House Health and Wellness, and I know we all have some, some questions about it, you know, we're five and a half months in, closing in on 800 members. If you have spent any time down there, you will realize what kind of product that we are, that we are offering. You know, it was difficult back when to, you know, to have 25,000 square feet of recreational space, and, you know, we needed a revenue source, you know, based upon lease payments and stuff like that. So, we were certainly a little slow starting. There's no doubt about that. I think Mayor Keefe got us right on the, on the track of, and fast-tracking it to where we are now, but I would highly suggest that if you guys came down there at, you know, 6:00 AM, you know, you're gonna see 100 people in there working out, being very happy, and coming out of the spin room soaking wet, or coming out of the boot camp, so that's all I would say. I mean, I just, you know, it, a little bit more difficult to say sit here, but I would come down and visit, and I think that you'd be very impressed at what we have going on, and I think we'd be able to convince you in about 12 minutes.
I need more than convincing. I need to see the revenue. I need, I need to see 2,000 members, and I need to see it self-sustaining, but.
Yep.
Listen, I know it's a great facility. I was there for the opening. I've heard that it's fantastic from people, and I'm, listen, I'm a cheerleader. I want you to succeed, but I'm a little skeptical.
Got it.
Like I said.
Thank you.
There's a project that I'm much more skeptical about, and it's not the Haas Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mike, thanks for being up here. I just got a couple of quick questions. So, my first question is, I'm gonna bring up the Health Center, I'm sorry, but is, do we have a date? Like, is there a time that we say, okay, past this date, if we're not there? Like, do we, are we looking at that, or no? My biggest concern is the sale of that building, and are we protected in any way from that happening to us?
That's a, it's a great question, Counselor. We know we're getting close to the end of the three-year lease, and I know that the mayor has reached out to the owner of the building, and we're talking about a lot of different options. I know Counselor Argenzio had some concerns about signing anything more than a one-year lease, and I do think that, again, while I'm cautiously optimistic here on full-cost recovery, if it doesn't take a year to become full-cost recovery, I guess we really have a decision to make, because we've put a lot of capital, a lot of hard work into this, so I know the former mayor had always said that he's not, he's not opposed to having this subsidized by appropriations. I don't think the current mayor is of that mind, but yeah, we're gonna be actively looking at all of our options with the center. I know we're trying to negotiate a lease that's actually less than what we paid before. I will say again that we did get a great opportunity with the $30 million from Opera funds, and yeah, I'd love to say we were 100% on every single thing we did with those dollars, and it was effective, but I do think that it was a tremendous opportunity for us to start this Wellness Center, and I kind of think of it, myself firstly, as an extension of the Park and Recreation Center, so, you know, maybe we can come more diverse with that center and use it for multiple things, but it was very frustrating in the beginning trying to get some direction on what the facility was gonna look like, but when Mayor Keefe came in, we really got to the point of just opening up a Health and Wellness Center. It wasn't gonna be a daycare center or a juice bar or anything else, so we're, I feel like we got good momentum here, but I wish I could answer that question a little clearer, but we're working towards trying to make sure that it's fully sustainable, and whether it's through negotiations, different activities and such down there, we're gonna do our best to make sure it's successful.
Thank you, Rich. And Mike, my last question, and I'm sure, I know you have an amazing staff, and everyone has their own little niche and specialization. I know we were losing our Assistant Director, and a big portion of his was planning, recreation, programming. Do you see that having an impact on the recreation?
No, no, I currently don't. We were a little over a year and a half without an Assistant Director, so maybe a year and three quarters. So, it shouldn't affect, you know, it'll be the trickle-down effect of programming, so nothing had stopped prior to that. Nothing will stop now.
Awesome. Thank you. Keep doing a good job. Keep giving your staff kudos, and thanks for coming up.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question.
Sorry, Counselor Argenzio.
The turf field behind the high school.
Yes.
I know a few years ago, you were ready to replace that, you had the funding in place, and then the high school became convoluted. Is that back on the?
So, yes, 100%. We have a purchase order for the turf already.
Okay.
And I think on Monday, you will see the bid go out, Monday or Tuesday.
And there's money for that? Was that Opera funds?
No, it's actually. No, it's actually, we are working with the school department to, we did have funds for the purchase of the turf itself. And now, depending on what the price comes in on the installation of that turf, we should have it fully paid for through reconciliation of our Schedule Nineteen with the schools, being that they hired a hundred extra teachers with the Student Opportuny Act money. They actually owed us some money for health care, so we're, we're just using that toward putting that turf field in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Mike.
Have a good day. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you.
And lastly is historical and cultural resources.
Got my historical and cultural resource hat on. Thank you, Counselor Richard Viskey, CFO. This budget is very basic. Several years back, we were approached by the members of the Historical Commission there at the building, at the bottom of the street here, and having trouble paying their utility bills. So we appropriated ten thousand dollars, and that ten thousand dollars every year is basically, we don't, we don't pay bills directly from it, but we, at the end of the year, we just transfer that money over there to reimburse them for the cost of utility. So we've appropriated ten thousand dollars the last couple of years, and essentially, it's just to help offset the cost of utilities for the building.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any questions from the council? Counsel Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rich, I can understand that I was going to ask about the ten thousand, so thanks for that clarification. Is there any chance we can get some kind of personnel there to operate the building more often than what is done with the volunteers now?
I mean, I think the short answer is yes, but I will, I would defer to my Boston mayor on what the future plans of that is. But we certainly, anything's possible, but I don't know that we have a master plan on what that would entail. But I know it's been talked about a bit here. But right now, I know they're pretty involved with rewiring that whole bill. And so I'm not sure if we're ready for that at this point, but I would, I would defer to the mayor on exactly answering that question.
Yeah, that project's almost done because the kids are coming to the end of their school year. So I would hope that, you know, we do consider it, that, because the building should be open more often, we just don't have enough volunteers to do it.
I think, I think you make a great point, Counselor, and I will, I will try to get you more information on that.
Would you please? I appreciate that. And I know, and I know the commission and the people that take care of the building would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great bill, and I think there's a lot of opportunities down there. And I, I'm sure we'll hear more about it, but right now, I think we're addressing capital needs down there and trying to get it ready for more public use.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Viskey.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for all these meetings and all your great questions, and I look forward to seeing you on the twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege.
Speak your point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that this budget is going to be sent to the Committee of the Whole, which will meet at 5:00 PM on June twenty-fourth. And I also just want to congratulate Counselor Silvestri on running some great budget meetings this year. Great job.
Thank you. Have a great night, and we'll see you Monday, June twenty-fourth.
And happy birthday.